Order for May 24th, if everybody would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the people of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty. Thank you very much. Lynda, roll call.
Councilmember Andrusik.
Aye.
Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
Vice Mayor King. And Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any reordering of the agenda tonight?
No ma'am, but under public comment, the last item, we have a presentation on Special Olympics, so if you can defer that one to last.
Absolutely. I do have two speaker slips for public comments besides Nikki Hansen. If anybody else wants to turn in a slip regarding anything, it can be on the agenda. It doesn't have to be on the agenda. This is your chance to get up and let council know what you're thinking or what we need to look into. I'm going to call Caroline up first.
Madam Mayor and members of the Buellton City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak with you. To each person listening, my name is Caroline and I support President Trump. I'm here to give some of the reasons why President Trump's foreign policy accomplishments should earn him the support of every American. In North Korea, President Trump's bold and courageous actions working with North Korean dictator Kim Jong Un have resulted in unprecedented steps toward denuclearization of the Korean Peninsula. In Syria, President Trump has defended innocent human life from horrible chemical gas attacks, proving that America does not only draw red lines, but will also enforce red lines. President Trump believes in the achievement of peace through strength, a foreign policy strategy that leads to more respect from our enemies and reassurance for our allies around the world. As we look to celebrate Memorial Day, let us never forget that these incredible gains in making the world a safer place could not have been accomplished without our great American military. I would like to read the following passage about Memorial Day. Some things in life are too beautiful to be forgotten, but there can also be something in death that is too beautiful to be forgotten. Hence, a memorial day to recall the sacrifices of soldiers for the preservation of the freedom of their country. Freedom is not an heirloom. Freedom is a life. Once received, it does not continue to exist without effort. As life must be nourished, defended, and preserved, in the same way, freedom must be repurchased in each generation. Soldiers, however, were not born to die. Death on a battlefield is an interruption to their summons to live. As one united country, let us all together pay grateful tribute to our military as we celebrate Memorial Day this coming Monday, May 28. Members of the Buellton City Council, thank you for allowing me to speak with you, and may everyone listening have a very good evening.
Thank you very much, Caroline.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Dorwin. Please step up.
John Dorwin, 104 Sixth Flag Circle, on behalf of Dorwin for City Council, November 2018. The resolutions on the consent agenda pertaining to the general municipal election to be held November 16th, I don't think they go far enough. First of all, I think this would be an appropriate time in Resolution 18-11 to indicate that a person who is elected to the Buellton City Council cannot resign until a replacement is selected to replace them. I think this would be an appropriate time for the council to deal with the problem that was visited upon us earlier this year and resolve it. The more substantive issue is Resolution 18-12. It is not enough to request of the Board of Supervisors a consolidation of the regular municipal election to the general election. My review of the Elections Code is that the request must be acted on by the Board of Supervisors, and they must adopt a resolution consolidating the election. And until that resolution is adopted by the Board of Supervisors, there is not a valid election under the provisions of the Elections Code. So I think there needs to be an additional step in the resolution, and that is that the city clerk be directed to obtain a copy of the Board of Supervisors' resolution consolidating the election, and then filing that resolution of adoption by the Board of Supervisors back here with the city. I think you have to go a little further than what's being contemplated in the resolution. The third one, regarding the cost of preparing a candidate statement. I would like to know, for my own economic self-interest, what this cost is going to be, and if the council is going to adopt the cost of the candidate statement, or if that's going to be left up to the staff. Is it going to be done by statement, or by word, or based on how many languages the candidate statement is going to be translated into pursuant to the provisions of the resolution? Some of us who have multi-page curriculum vitae and resumes, you know, may feel penalized by only being able to go 200 words. So I think there ought to be some disclosure here as to what the cost of the candidate statement is going to be. It should be discussed by the council, and whether or not it's going to be in a per-word or per-translation, or how the cost is going to be computed. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Would you like the city clerk to explain what this process is that we've done since incorporation?
Please.
Okay, so you guys will-
If you would speak into the microphone, please.
Hopefully approve those resolutions tonight for election. They will go down to the Board of Supervisors next week and be put on their agenda for approval on June 19th, and I do get a copy of that minute order back from the board once they're approved. That allows us to consolidate with the county. So that closes that loop when it comes around. As far as a candidate statement, we get that cost from the county about the second week in July. You can ask for it now, but you're not going to get it. So even though I've put the binders together, that information I don't have.
So the county decides the cost?
County decides, and it's usually anywhere between $600 and $900. Depends on how many people put statements in as to actual, the actual cost. And people get that, the difference in cost back that run for council about November, December, when the county figures out what the actual cost is. We have no control over that process.
All righty. Thank you very much. Okay, I don't have any other speaker slips. Did anybody else want to get up and put their three minutes in? If not, I will have our city manager or city clerk, who's going to, oh, Kyle Bellough.
Kyle Bellough will do that.
Mr. Bellough, would you please introduce our speaker?
Certainly. Mayor Hawley, honorable council members, I'm very glad to be with you this evening to introduce Nikki Hansen, seventh grader at Honoda Middle School, who has created a wonderful video for you tonight chronicling the first sport of the San Ynez Valley Special Olympics program, which has been held right here at the Buellton Community Recreation Center, and that's basketball. So I will let Nikki Hansen come up to tell you a little bit more about it.
Hi there. Hello, I am Nikki Hansen. I'm here tonight to share with you a video I made about the newly reinstated San Ynez Valley Special Olympics basketball team. I first got interested in Special Olympics a few years ago when my uncle joined the organization as an athlete in Lompoc. I started taking pictures and videos for Special Olympics last year when I made a video for the Lompoc basketball team for the players to take home. This year, I chose to volunteer for the San Ynez Valley Basketball Team for the Seventh Grade Kindness Project at Honoda that I took pictures and videos for. I was then asked by Buellton Rec. and Jerry Dominguez to create a video with my pictures to help raise awareness for Special Olympics. According to the Special Olympics website, 1% to 3% of the world's population has developmental disabilities, which means that there are potential 200 to 600 people in the valley that could benefit from this program. I recently finished the video and wanted to share it, and I hope you all enjoy.
Thank you very much.
What are your plans for Special Olympics?
My plans for Special Olympics is we're going to have a complete program for all the activities in San Ynez.
What inspired you to volunteer for Special Olympics?
I volunteered for the Kindness Project and the kind of, um, Uncle Will did the year I died.
How does it feel to be a volunteer?
Good. I didn't help, help out with the basketball. I think we just-
Does Special Olympics benefit your child?
Yes, it gives them a sense of team play, and there's a lot of diversity and ability so that he doesn't feel totally left out, and he feels that he is making a good contribution to the team.
What got you interested in Special Olympics?
So I first started in Special Olympics about five years ago, tracking the open mess of the Buellton Community Recreation Center where we're sitting. So I was doing that through my job, teaching adaptive physical education, and when I heard about the opportunity to coach basketball, since I've coached basketball and already coached basketball, it was a perfect combination to do both.
Based on this season, are you planning on continuing to coach Special Olympics?
I definitely plan to continue coaching Special Olympics, basketball again next year, maybe helping out with some of the sports that, you know, that we decided on adding to the programs.
What is the most rewarding part of being a coach?
So those important players definitely seeing, they do admit of the players. Improvement's great, too, but just seeing how happy it makes them to compete and work together, and, you know, not always be, you know, the odd, odd personality, you know, they're all together, they're all having fun, and it's just the reward in that, in that sense.
What is great to me, support of Special Olympics?
Well, we work together as part of a group, like Solvang Education, and we're interested in volunteers in the valley to help provide facilities, instructors, and most of all, volunteers to help this program succeed. One of them provided the gymnasium space for our first sport, basketball, and the main lead coach, David Ibsen, is also a part-time employee for the rec center, who does open gym basketball for adults on Monday nights. And so, and he, because he has a extraordinary background with adaptive PD and experience with the Special Education Consortium here in the valley, he was the eligible candidate to make that leap and become the first coach for the Special Olympics basketball.
What more does Buellton Rec. need to continue helping Special Olympics?
We really need volunteer support, as well as other coaches in different areas as we continue to grow and add sports. Our Special Olympics coordinator, T. Navarette, indicated that, that we just need us really good volunteers that can be vetted by Special Olympics and provide that instruction, whether it's the bocce or any other sports that are offered to Special Olympics.
What is it like being a Special Olympics athlete?
It's fun. I really, really enjoy it. I've been doing it for so many years, but I will keep it up.
Does Special Olympics help you find new things?
Yes, it helps me.
If you could add one sport to the valley, which one would it be?
Softball.
Are you satisfied with the coaching in the valley?
Yes, I am. We are very happy with it.
Nikki, thank you very, very much for sharing this. This is, how long has it been, Jerry?
Well, we started in January this year.
But since we've had Valley Special-
Oh, 30 years.
30 years.
Long time.
Long time. So it's nice to see it back, and at Buellton Rec. And Nikki, thank you so much for documenting it and showing us how special a program it is.
May I give these to you?
Absolutely.
For the council to see the various sports that are available.
Jerry, why don't, can you get up and just, you've been so involved in it.
But especially, it's not on. Oh, it's on. Especially to Kyle. Sometimes I just hate to call him, but he's been very generous, and he's been a great recreation director.
Thank you.
Very lucky to have him.
Thank you.
As well as David Ibsen from the high school. Randy Rogers has helped coach all the way. Jenny from the Solvang Rec. has been very cooperative with us, and we hope Nikki will go be invited to come to the Solvang Council.
Wouldn't that be nice? Thank you very, very much. Okay, well, shoot, we don't get that in public comment very often. That was, that was a wonderful, wonderful presentation.
Thank you, Nikki.
Okay, well, guess we have to move on now to our consent calendar. We have minutes of May 10, 2018 Regular City Council Meeting. Thank you all for coming. List of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year 2017-18. Thank you for coming. The monthly treasures report, April 30th, 2018. Resolutions pertaining to municipal, general municipal election to be held November 6, 2018, and those would be Resolution Number 18-11, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, calling and giving notice of the holding of a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, for the election of certain officers as required by the provisions of the laws of the State of California relating to general law cities. We have Resolution Number 18-12, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of Santa Barbara to consolidate a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018, with the general election pursuant to Section 10403 of the Elections Code. Resolution Number 18-13, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Buellton, California, adopting regulations for candidates for elective office pertaining to candidate statements, material submitted to the electorate, and the cost thereof submitted to the voters at an election to be held on Tuesday, November 6, 2018. Consent item number five is acceptance of bid and a word of contract for the 2017-18 road maintenance project. Six is acceptance of public right-of-way dedication for Hampton Inn, and the van rental agreement between the City of Buellton and Buellton Union School District. Any questions or comments?
Madam Mayor, I move for approval of items one through seven as read.
I'll second.
All righty. Lynda?
Okay, Councilmember Andrusik.
Aye.
Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye. Thank you very much. Any presentations tonight?
No ma'am.
Public hearings?
No ma'am.
Councilmember comments slash items?
I have two, Madam Mayor.
Certainly.
Yesterday, I attended the 18th Annual Economic Action Summit in Santa Barbara with the keynote speakers, Mark Schneep, impact panel discussion involving and around the economic conditions in this county. And with that, one of the, one of the presenters was Joe Holland, our property person, and I brought you, I brought a copy for the, for the council. I don't know if anyone was aware of it, but he, they've given us a snapshot of what the mudslides and, mudslides and the fires, what the damage was caused, and how they anticipate. There's a huge shortfall in property tax revenue stream is, I have it for, one for the city, and I kept one for myself, but I think it'd be good for people that are interested in the, the impact that it's having on property tax. Their, the law stipulates that you can only charge for property that is saleable, and the problems are the identifying of the property lines. They showed, they showed aerials where they can't, people can't find their property lines. So that, it's a, it's a huge, it's a huge hit to the, to the state, and I think, I forgot to bring my, my note of, I think, $160 million in immediate loss, and the future is, is going, there's, there's a graph. If we put it on the website, I think it'd be good for people to realize that could happen to any community, but it happened to that community, Montecito, and the county is suffering for it, so that, it was an eye-opener for, for all of us in attendance. The second item, and it kind of deals with unforeseen circumstances, things go on. I'm asking that we revisit the parking lot plan as, as we have, as has been presented to us, for the simple reason that at our, at our last meeting, we discovered that there was a sidewalk being put in which will make it unusable for, for parking. So I, I did a little calculating on what the square footage is that we purchased. We purchased 11,300 square feet, the lot, but we, we lose 1,350 square feet for that because it runs the length of the, of the, of the property. And I would, I think the only fair way to do this would be to enter into or negotiate a property line adjustment, perhaps. If we're putting up a fence, we're basically giving up what looks to be about nine feet from property line to the, to where the, the parking structure would be.
Well, at this time, there's no, we're, we're not doing anything, so that's just a concept plan, so there's nothing said in that. So when it comes back at any point with developers, we will relook at that.
Okay.
But I would advise, we don't need to look at it this time because it's just a concept, and the council tabled it, so we're not-
We didn't, okay, so we're, we're not going out for bid and those sort of things?
No, the council directed us to wait and see if a developer comes in, negotiate with them, but that plan you see is, is not the final plan, it's just a, an idea.
Okay.
So when it comes back to the council at some point, when it's ready to move forward, we can change.
Our presentation that was viewed at the last meeting, people were wondering how we could be spending that much money for the development of the, of the parking lot, but, so that's why I asked that it come back, but if we're, if it's still going to be perhaps revised or relooked at, because if we're giving up, I, I look at it as a gift of public funds to give somebody, some property owner the use of 13%, 12% of our property.
And, correct, but again, this, the action by the council was just looking at a concept plan of kind of what could be done. If the project comes back with a developer, if the council wants to build it, a plan will come back for full discussions.
Nobody was ready to move forward with it at the last meeting.
So nothing's set in stone, that plan is not being implemented, we're not budgeting for it, we're doing nothing associated with that.
So all we've done is purchased the property for $280,000.
And decided that maybe a parking lot is the best use at some point in the future, and we will relook at design.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments or items from you, Mr. Mercado?
Nothing.
I just had a couple. First of all, our next council meeting is June 14th at 7:00. That starts at 6:00. Hopefully it won't go too late in the evening, and if you have a chance, at 7:00 on June 14th, Karen Harris, the Buellton Historical Society, is putting on a presentation given by Karen Harris at Pea Soup Anderson's at 7:00, freed snacks and beverages, and she has been tracking Buellton and the valley's history from the early 1900s, and she'll be giving a presentation from 1925 to 1957. So if you, meeting ends early and you got, you're not ready to go home, head over to Pea Soup Anderson's and listen to Karen, because I, Buellton's history is pretty interesting. The other one was, I wanted to thank Vice Mayor King, who is not here tonight. Our Special Olympics just finished their basketball season. We're working on bowling and bocce, and Mr. King was able to get the river course in Solvang to let Special Olympics use their courts on a weekly basis, so I wanted to thank him very, very much. That was it. Okay. Any written communications?
No ma'am.
Committee reports?
The Central Coast Water Authority had no agenda items, or the meeting was canceled for lack of agenda items presentation, that would have been today, so we did not meet. I wanted to give you an update. You, you appointed me to the Sustainable Groundwater Management Pro- You appointed me to the Sustainable Groundwater Management Program, and that is quite an undertaking. And I'll just read a highlight to you. This, I met with Bill Bulow, who is the Water Resource Manager at San Ynez River Water Conservation District. I brought a pack, I brought the PowerPoint presentation for each of you, so you can have, because I walked into the room, when I first met him, I said, "What are we talking about?" So there's, your name is Art.
Sure.
This is for Mr. Dave, and this is staff's copy.
Thank you.
But it, in essence, the Department of Water Resources Management has issued or granted a $1 million bond, or a $1 million grant for the development of this basin water planning and preparation. The timeframe has just now started, and it needs to be completed by 2020, I think it's July 2020, so it's not like something that's going to happen right away. But there were people, and we're using the Bilton Planning Department's conference room for the meetings. The next meeting will be July the 18th, that's been our next meeting. It was 10:30 in the morning, if you're wanting to put that on your calendar. It's a very small group, but quite a bit of responsibility, and the state has, as you may know, has tied very many strings around the funding, and if you do not perform your Prop 1 responsibilities, you find yourself whatever trouble they're going to cause us. But yet to be seen. I think everybody was positive about it, and anyone that's interested could come weigh in.
Well, thank you for serving, thank you for serving on that board. Did you have anything?
I had nothing.
I just had from our Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, just an announcement, the county and CHMASH worked together to apply and received a $300,000 grant from the state to do a traffic study on 246 to see how we can ease the traffic, which is going to be very, very helpful, I think. And June 13, there will be ribbon cutting the 246 passing lanes between here and Lompoc. So again, if you've got nothing to do on a Wednesday morning, about 10:00, right between Bilton and Lompoc, there's going to be a news, and probably not even that, but pretty ribbon. So that's June 13. Okay, if we've got nothing else, we're going to move on to our business items. Agenda item eight, thank you for coming in, Kyle, is the Contract for Law Enforcement Services between the County of Santa Barbara and the City of Bilton for fiscal year 2018-19. Mr. Birdzinski?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, the city's contract with the county for law enforcement services was approved when the city incorporated with one amendment in 1997, and the enforcement costs have been reviewed and approved by the council on a yearly basis since then. The Sheriff's Department is updating their contracts with the cities of Bilton, Carpinteria, and Solvang, so all contracts are consistent with one another, and they are changing the service model from a full-time equivalent model to a deputy service unit model that is used by many other law enforcement agencies. The new cost scenario for the models is included in your packet. The cost for the next fiscal year shows a 5% increase over what we paid the prior fiscal year. This includes continuation of our current service level, including the motor deputy. The Sheriff's Department indicates that additional increases may be required over the following two fiscal years to achieve full cost recovery, but all future costs will be based on the actual cost of the prior year, so no more estimating or guessing what the costs for the sheriff's services are. The new contract is attached, and staff is working on this draft contract since late last year, and they're proposing an initial one-year contract with the new service model, so its effectiveness can be evaluated both the sheriff and the city. And a longer-term contract can be then approved for subsequent fiscal years. There are several advantages to this new contract format. Again, all future costs will be based on the actual cost of the prior year with no guessing. We are only paying for the services we receive. There's more accountability and transparency, as all resources are fully being accounted and reported to the city. As you saw, some of the recent reports that I've given to the council and put on the website, they're tracking the deputies a little closer, and we'll have full tracking of where the deputies are each month, whether Solvang came into Bilton, Bilton went into Solvang, et cetera, so we'll have that full transparency. And the sheriff's office will be able to be open five days a week, since under the new model, there's no cost savings for closing the office. They need the staff, so it can be open under this particular model. Lieutenant Brad McVay, or one of our former station commanders here, retired lieutenant, is here working on the contracts, and he will be able to answer any questions. With the new 5% increase this year, we're actually going to have to decrease our budget for the next fiscal year, because with the uncertainty of negotiations, we have budgeted a higher amount for fiscal year 1819, so we're actually going to realize a savings of $196,000 on the budget, and that's reflected in our budget adjustments that are coming up a little later. So staff's recommending the City Council approve the fiscal year 1819 contract with the County of Santa Barbara for law enforcement services, and authorize the mayor to execute the contract.
Thank you very much. Before we go, start making decisions, do you have any questions before I go to the public? Any questions regarding this?
Not this time. I think you're, I'll wait.
Thank you.
The news is too good.
So do I have anybody, if you'd like to get up, Finn, and then fill out a speaker slip afterwards, that would be lovely.
Yes, 546 Blue Blossom Way. I read in the paper today about all the mandatory overtime for the police departments, and...
No disrespect, but...
This is a peaceful city. Do we really need a deputy here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
One and a half, actually.
Thank you.
And I forgot to introduce Commander Rob Plastino, the North County Commander, also has joined us here as well.
Wonderful. Okay, anybody else? Nobody else?
I don't know if...
Did you want to?
Or want to just say anything?
Step on up, it's a quiet night.
Madam Mayor, council members, it's great to be up here with you again. I haven't had that privilege since I served as your police chief, but it's nice to be back, and the main reason I wanted to come up is to tell you what a pleasure it has been working with your staff, especially Mr. Birdzinski. This has been a long year, a lot of work. We look at our cities as a partner, and to add on to Mr. Birdzinski, we're also renegotiating the contract for Galita, so all four of our contract cities. Our goal is to have same service for the same cost for everyone, and all the contracts resemble each other identically. We wanted to get them updated, current legal language, current clear description of what our services are going to be, and everybody can understand that ahead of time. So we think this is a really good move forward. Like I said, we've worked really hard at it, and it's been tremendous working with your staff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work you've put into it. All right, I'm bringing it back to council for discussion. I just, I would like to say, before we take any action, first of all, I truly appreciate the sheriff and our city manager working together. Initially, we were looking at a much higher percentage increase, and we were looking at the possibility of having to lose our motorcycle officer, and Mr. Birdzinski and the Sheriff's Department went back at it, and I truly appreciate that our office is going to be open. That was really hard, having to cut that back a few years ago, when we went from five to two. To bring it back to five, the residents will truly appreciate it, and 5% is something our city can deal with, and truly appreciate the transparency and seeing what we're getting, and it's a lot clearer, so.
My observation is it's the best of all worlds for the whole valley. Solvang and Bilton are independent, and yet they meld right into, we're treated as part of the family of the county, and it is benefiting us immensely this year, because there were huge numbers that we were hearing six months ago. But I think I want to, for anyone that's ever been involved, when you've had an incident in Bilton, where we've had a loss of life or ongoing, you know, there are people that run wild through the valley, and the sheriff is able to contain it, and they immediately impacted the culprits, instead of one or two officers looking around trying to figure out which direction should they go. They have a, they have an air force, they have everything for the benefit of the citizens of Bilton, and I don't think we would ever get a better value than we have gotten. It's gotten very expensive, but that's not their responsibility, that's a fact of the cost of living and operating the system that we enjoy. So I really appreciate what, and if you'll convey that to the sheriff, I would appreciate it.
I also agree with what's been said by our mayor and Ed. I think it's a fair and equitable contract, the enhanced savings. The only thing I would like to see, and I know it's a supplemental law enforcement service item, somehow with the school resource deputy to be somehow added, or, and maybe something that where it's all, it doesn't have to be Bilton-specific, but maybe Bilton, Solvang, where it's all shared, and just with the things that are happening now in today's world, I think through the years, the school resource deputy had been advantageous, and I know when my children were there, it was comforting, so somehow we can...
And the advantage of this format and contract is the city can add components to the contract. It will cost money, but during this first year of the contract, we can see how things are going, and then we'll be doing this next year for extending the contract, hopefully, and if there's budget savings, we can, you know, take a look at that and work with the Sheriff's Department on that.
That was nice having you, too. All righty. Do I hear a motion then?
Yes, ma'am. I would move for approval of fiscal year 2018-19 contract with the County of Santa Barbara for law enforcement services, and authorize you to execute the contract.
I'll second.
Linda?
Okay, Councilmember Andresek.
Aye.
Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming tonight, thank you for all your work. Okay, moving on. Agenda item number nine, our Discussion and Direction on CalPERS Pension Funding. Chanel, Ms. Zamora?
Madam Mayor, City Council, tonight, we're going to have Discussion and Direction on CalPERS Pension Funding. This has been a hot topic lately, has been affecting many cities throughout the state for a few years now, so I thought this would be a perfect opportunity, since we are doing budget adjustments, and CalPERS is coming up with a lot of different ways to alleviate this cost. We're going to talk about some options that the city can take. So I'm going to give you a brief overview of what we're going to talk tonight. We're going to talk about what funds CalPERS, how CalPERS gets its money. We're going to talk about what the City of Bilton provides its CalPERS members, the different benefit plans. Then we're going to go over a brief history on CalPERS and how it got to this situation. And then we're going to talk, most importantly, the options the city can take to mitigate the increase in the city's unfunded accrued liability, and then we'll talk about staff So first of all, what are the funding sources for CalPERS? So there's three funding sources. The first one is the return on the system investment assets or portfolio. This is the portfolio investment earnings. The second one is the employee contribution by CalPERS members. Oftentimes, these are paid by the city. We do have a contract, CalPERS plan, the city does pay this employee contribution. And lastly, the third component is the employer-paid contribution. So the table, the graph that you're seeing on the screen shows the allocation of every CalPERS dollar, so showing that for every dollar, 62 cents comes from the investment portfolio earnings, 25 cents comes from the employer contribution, and the employee contributes 13 cents. So if you're kind of looking at this in the bigger picture, 75 cents for every dollar comes from the investment portfolio and employee contribution. So the employee only pays 25 cents for every dollar. So tonight, we're going to focus on that green pie chart of the 25 cents for every dollar. So first of all, what is the employer contribution? How is this calculated? So the employer contribution is the normal cost plus the amortization of the unfunded accrued liability. I'll be mentioning this as the ULL tonight, and together, those two components make up the annual employer contribution. So I'll discuss what the normal cost is. The normal cost is the percentage of pay that the employer pays. So this is done biweekly, since we are on a biweekly pay schedule, so there is a percentage set by CalPERS, and every pay period, the City of Bilton pays that to CalPERS. And the unfunded accrued liability, the ULL, that is the accumulated pension debt that is not covered by contributions in the past. So this is where all the cities are experiencing a hardship, this ULL. The city does not have control over both costs. The employer contribution is determined by an annual evaluation report, so that is done every year based on a measurement date. There are many factors that can cause the employer rate to change, including the investments earnings, benefit changes, changes in assumptions such as rate of return and mortality rates. And with the ULL, this is required when the planned liabilities exceed the planned assets. So it is the amount needed to fund past service credits earned and accrued for members currently receiving benefits, active employees, and members entitled to deferred benefits. So on this table, we're providing you with the two plans that the City of Bilton contributes to CalPERS. The first one is the classic plan, and all members that were hired prior to January 1st, 2013, are on this plan. And in 2013, the PEPRA came into effect, and that is a reform that came about after the Great Recession. And that's for all the employees hired on or after January 1st, 2013. So here, you can see the difference on the benefit formula. The members on the classic plan receive 2% at retirement age 55 versus PEPRA, where they receive 2% at 62. And the required employee contribution rate for the classic plan is 7% versus the employee contribution rate of 6.5%. So as I mentioned before, sometimes the employer pays the employee contribution, the City of Bilton pays the 7% for current employees. And so classic, the required employer contribution rate is 9.599% versus PEPRA, which is 6.988%. So if you look at the total rate, that's what the employer pays for the classic plan, since we're paying employee plus employer portion. And the PEPRA, we're only paying the 6.988%. So you can see those cost savings on that PEPRA plan, which is why CalPERS put this into place after the recession. So just to give you an overview of how many members we have currently in CalPERS, we have 19 full-time employees. All council members are allowed to contribute to CalPERS. Currently, there's 12 employees on the classic retirement plan and seven employees on the PEPRA plan. So here is an idea, it kind of gives you an idea of how the CalPERS system works. So we contribute, all the contributions go into a CalPERS pool, and the point of the pool is that everybody puts their money in together, and it gets invested in a series of asset classes. And in addition, each employer has its own independent pool with their own funding level. So these numbers come from CalPERS, that shows that in 2001, there were two active workers for every retiree. By 2016, there were 1.3 active employees for every retiree, and projected 10 to 20 years from now, there will be .6 active employees. And projected ten to twenty years from now, there will be 0.6 active employees for- yeah, active employees for every retiree. So here is a history of CalPERS from 1993 to 2018. I'm gonna see if this laser works. So here, in the early 1990s, you can see that this line here is the unfunded, the funded status of CalPERS. So you can see here, there was 96% and then it shot up to 128%. That's a time where it's called super funded. So in 1993 to 2000, CalPERS was experiencing strong investment returns and it created momentum for cities to enhance their benefits. By 1999, since the ratio was at 128, some cities decided to take advantage of the strong economy and increase their benefit formula from 2% up to 2.5%. So the city at this time decided that they wanted to be conservative and they would not jump into the bandwagon and did not decrease the benefits, which was the best decision because if you see here in 2000, the dot com bubble happened. And then all the investments starting to drop and you can see the funding ratio dropped. And from 128, 129, it started to drop down. So after this happened, CalPERS took a significant hit and investments combined with more expensive benefits created the unfunded liability started in 2012. And not only would that dot com hit for CalPERS pension, but also the Great Recession from 2007 to 2009, where you can see here, it dropped to 61%. And the dark line here, that is the asset and the light blue is the liability. So you can see that the liability has gone up and then the amount of assets, which is the member contribution, they have been pretty low. So in 2013, that's when CalPERS signed the P E P R reform and they established a new tier with less generous benefits compared to classic members. And one thing I forgot to mention in the previous table, the P E P R plan prohibits employers to pay the employee contribution. So what has CalPERS done since then? So at the beginning of this year, CalPERS decided that they need a new method of valuing their reports. So what they did is they lowered the discount rate from 7.5% to 7%. They have a new portfolio plan. So now they start July 1st, 18, they will do 50% global equity, 28% fixed income, 13% real assets, 8% private equity, 1% liquidity. And not only that, but the current amortization schedules for our unfunded liability is thirty years. They're gonna make it a requirement for all cities to be under this twenty-year amortization schedule. And that's gonna save cities in the long-term interest. So what can cities do to help alleviate this cost of the CalPERS contribution? We will discuss several options. The first one is reduce personnel costs and other services. We can pay down the unfunded liability, which would be sort of like an accelerated payment on a mortgage. We go from a thirty-year mortgage to a twenty-year mortgage and you save interest. Or you can use reserves or one-time revenue to pay down the liability and put a dent on it. The third option is to set up a reserve account to fund future pension obligations, which would be savings for increasing costs down the line. Our option four, which is fund a Section 115 irrevocable pension trust. So first, talk about option one, which is to reduce personnel and other services. The city will not have to worry about this. We project there's enough revenue to cover the increase of expenses. As far as cutting personnel costs, that means they're not laying off employees or giving them less benefits. And what helps the city of Beelton is that we contract out our public safety so we'd not have police, department of fire, because that's the biggest driver for other cities that have this huge increase in the unfunded liability. So that has saved us money. So here on this table, I have my projected revenue in the blue and projected expenditure in the red. So you can see that revenue has, is gonna be pretty steady while the expenditures increase, but at no point does the expenditures exceed the revenue. So it seems like with this increase, the city can take the increase. So option two, which is essentially accelerate the payments. So there's- there's a few advantages on this that we will be saving interest in the long-term. And it would also lower the unfunded portion of liability again because we're paying off more of the principal essentially. And the disadvantage would be that there's less budget flexibility since we are paying more for CalPERS, there might be less money to budget for other items. So I did mention earlier that we have two plans, the classic and the P E P R. So every year, CalPERS puts out a valuation report. The valuation report usually lasts about two years. So this one that I presented in your packet was published August 2017 and I have the measurement date of June 30, 2016. And that dictates the payment for fiscal year 1819. So a lot of things can go on in the next few years. So next year, there will be a new, or this year, there will be a new report in August 2018 with the measurement date of June 30, 2017. So every year, the unfunded liability amount will change depending on how the market does. So here's a summary, a summary table from the valuation report. And it shows up here the actual amount we paid for the unfunded liability. So sixteen, seventeen, it was eighty-one thousand two hundred twenty-eight dollars. Fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, we paid ninety-eight thousand five hundred thirty-four. And the normal cost increased a little bit. But now for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, the normal cost is gonna go up to 10.152% and our unfunded liability amount goes up to 124,305. And you can see here on the table, CalPERS also increases in the valuation report based on the assumptions. And it shows that in the next few years, that unfunded liability is expected to grow. It's gonna grow about almost 110,000 in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So here on this graph, I'm comparing the payments for a thirty-year or twenty-year amortization schedule. So that lighter blue line right there is the twenty-year amortization payment and then the darker blue line is the thirty. So you can see that in the first years under the thirty-year plan, there's steep increases in the U I L payment. And that kind of makes it difficult to budget because it's about twenty, anywhere from a ten to twenty thousand jump. Whereas if we're paying a twenty-year payment, yes, our initial payment is more, but every year we have very small increment changes, which is a lot easier to budget for. So if we decide to pay on that twenty-year amortization schedule, we're looking at to save about 394,321 in interest savings. And you can see here that the last, the peak payment on the twenty-year is 289,295 versus the peak payment in the thirty-year, which is right about here. Can't really see that number, but you can see that the peak number here is higher, but you still have ten more years to pay on a thirty-year. So here we're done, we save interest, we don't have to worry about paying for ten more years on this base. So now we're gonna look at the P E P R plan. This plan is fairly new since 2013, so it's not really large at this point. So here is a summary again, fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, our unfunded liability payment was only eighty-eight dollars. Fiscal year seventeen, eighteen is 235. For fiscal year eighteen, nineteen, our payment will be 330 dollars. And you can see here that that U I L is gonna increase every year. By twenty-four, twenty-five, it's gonna go up to 1600 dollars. And here again, is a similar graph. So the dark line is thirty-year, the lighter line is a twenty-year. The savings between both plans is really small, it's about a thousand dollars and 124 dollars. And you can see that by fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, the payments are pretty much the same. And that's because our amortization base is only about 6,000 dollars, it's really small. And I did mention in the staff report that because this is such a small unfunded liability amount, the city can pay for it this year and not have to worry about this liability. And next, this year in the new valuation report, either the contribution, the U I L rate is gonna be higher or lower. So either we can be, have a small unfunded liability or we can be super funded for this So here's a table that summarizes the total contribution for both plans, classic and P E P R, because they are separate, but we pay them together. Here is the similar one, which is a thirty-year, oops, thirty-year and a twenty-year. So for the first year, we're gonna pay about forty thousand seven hundred ninety more if we decide to pay on the twenty-year amortization. And then the following year, we're gonna pay almost 16,000 dollars more than eighteen, nineteen. But what you can see is that for future years, we're gonna pay less than if we want a thirty because during these first two years, we're essentially paying the interest upfront and we're paying principal down here, again, like a mortgage payment. So this will realize the saving about 43,000 dollars over the seven years. So what does the impact on the fiscal year eighteen, nineteen budget? The P E P R budget for fiscal year eighteen, nineteen budgeted 107,100 for the CalPERS unfunded liability. And again, this is because we would not get the report until August. So we under-projected what our CalPERS unfunded liability was gonna be. This amount is allocated between the general fund, water, general fund, water fund, and sewer fund. The general fund pays 70% of the unfunded liability and the water and sewer fund both pay 15%. So with this newly required U I L contribution, classic plus P E P R, this year, we're gonna pay 124,635. So this required contribution already requires a budget adjustment of 17,900 allocated between general, water, and sewer fund. But what if the city decides to pay under the twenty-year amortization schedule? Then the payment will be 165,425. And that will require a budget adjustment of 58,325, again, allocated between general, water, and sewer fund. So the payment for the twenty-year, that's already gonna be projected on the budget adjustments that are later presented to council tonight. So now we'll discuss option three, which is to set up a reserve policy for CalPERS. What this is, is council decides either a certain amount or percentage of surpluses to set aside for future pension obligations. Again, this is determined by city council and this would be restricted in the case that we're gonna save this amount of money every year, but we can only use it for pensions in the future. So the advantage of this is that it creates rate stabilization and it creates a rainy day fund in case, in case things go bad, if we have bad economic, we have bad economic conditions or we have to budget something else, at least we have the savings in there for our pension. The disadvantage is that you lose potential to earn interest on this because we're not allowed to touch it. And yes, we're gonna pay CalPERS and it does not reduce our overall liability because we still have it. Option four is to establish a Section 115 pension trust. This is similar to the reserve fund, but this is fairly new. There's not a lot of cities that are doing this. There was, on one of my listservs, a questionnaire done of how many cities have a Section 115 trust established. Out of the forty-two that responded, twenty-four said they did. But what I found is that these cities are much larger and their filing liability is over the millions of dollars. And the advantage of this for them would be that, again, in case of a, if that economic downturn, they have that savings for CalPERS. Investments in this trust are really less restricted than the normal general fund investment policy. They do yield a higher return. The cities can maintain greater local control of assets. What that means is that the city is not obligated to pay a certain amount or contribute a certain amount to Section 115 trust by a due date like CalPERS sets. The city can contribute anytime they want, any set amount of dollars that they want. And another advantage is on the balance sheet because it is, a pension trust is an asset, it offsets the liability on, on the books. And the disadvantage of having a Section 115 trust is that you can lose principal because it does not follow the same guidelines as the investment policy. What we put in is not insured. With our normal investments, we're insured up to 250,000 dollars. So we always receive the principal regardless of how the market does. Another disadvantage is it does not lower the unfunded liability, it just offsets it on the books. I also talked to an actuary that's on the phone tonight and he's available to answer the questions after we're done. You know, this is seen with, again, bigger cities and the city of Beelton does not have a warrant for it. And on top of that, you have administrative, administrative costs associated with the trust and usually you have to go out and do an RFP to find a company that does the service. So the, the cost would be much greater for the city considering we only have three thousand dollars of the U I L payment and our liability is only about 2.2 million. So here is staff recommendations. Staff recommends that the city council consider option two and option three. Option two will save the city 394,000 dollars in, 394,322 dollars in interest in the long-term. And we'll be ahead of again by fiscal year 2021, 22, then CalPERS changes all their schedules to a twenty-year. So in the meanwhile, in the next few fiscal years, we'll be saving interest. Option three will provide a rainy day savings funds in case the U I L situation worsens. And again, this is an option, safer option than option four because option four is subject to the market volatility and the city could potentially lose money under option four but not option three. Bill, CalPERS actuaries on the phone to answer any questions you may have and open questions as well.
Thank you very much. Okay, before we go to public, does council have any questions?
It's not really a question. What do, when are they going to bring the anticipated, you know, they, they report, I believe it's 7% and I think they were real proud of themselves, they went from seven and a half down to seven. No one's making that kind of return and I think that's what's causing this tidal wave of liabilities in, in small communities. Because more people are retiring than are putting into the fund. And I, I don't know if Bill would have that, if he can explain why, I mean, is that a, is that an elected decision? There's nobody making 7%.
Bill, do you wanna answer that question?
Hello?
Hi Bill.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
How they determine the 7% rate was based on capital market assumptions for each asset class. So- So through those calculations, the seven percent is what basically arose from that. Whether that, you know, materializes in the future is, again, a question that I can't answer.
Right. In, in the eighties, seven percent was a reality. And I think we're stuck in that idea, but reality is, between two and three percent is the reality that private people are, in, in safe accounts are, you know, when you take private sector versus the PERS program, and I don't know when they're ever going to settle, settle into reality, because the...
Well, I can give you my personal view.
Okay.
And I agree with you. If you look at the bonds, the bond market, which we're going to, right now, we're currently twenty percent invested in bonds.
Okay.
Their rate of return, the ten-year now is around three, the thirty-year is three point two. And if you talk to any investment professional, if you buy a bond now at three point two percent for thirty years, you're only going to get three point two percent for, for thirty years. So I agree with you. I, I think the seven percent is on the high, but this is, I'm just one actuary, there might be another. But this is a big, you know, we have investment professionals also. And based on the capital, you know, we're going to review the capital market assumptions again, I believe, in a year or two. So what's it going to become of that? Or come out of that? I, it may, it may drop down, it may be low, I would expect it to be lower. But again, it goes through a process, a capital market assumption. You know, if you have twenty-eight percent bonds, and your long-term assumption is only three percent, it follows that seven percent is not, unless you have eighty percent equity. And then the equity, capital market assumption might be eight percent or nine percent, that, you know, even some investment professionals are saying you're not going to get that in the future either. So here we are in a theoretical versus reality world, and, you know, what's everyone's opinion? So I, I, in some ways, I agree with you. I would like to see it lowered also, but, you know, it's a process.
Thing, but we, at some point, someone's going to have to tell them, let's get real with this. Because it, the professionals that are in the business, having, having been there, if I were to tell someone I could give them a portfolio of seven percent, I could be sent to prison for lying. And that's, I think, what's happened here, and they just simply...
Well, it's a process. We have a board, and they will review it again. And I would, you know, there's a lot of employers that are, that are coming down to the board meetings and voicing their concern, just as you are.
Okay.
And I would recommend that also.
So maybe in twenty years? Thank you, Bill.
All right. Thank you.
Not very encouraging.
I had, I had a couple of questions. Are you done? Did you have more questions?
Well, no, that's, that's as bad as I can think of.
That was it, huh? Okay. So we have the unfunded accrued liability, URL, and you say every year, they look at it and they decide what the percentage is going to be, where it's going. So for all the work that went into this, and you can see that a lot of work went into it, we're just kind of guessing, aren't we? I mean, we don't really know from year to year where it's going to go. Is that correct?
And we know eighteen-nineteens, but yes, kind of, our assumptions are based on his valuation. And we do project the same assumptions throughout. That's how we come up with that seven-year projection. But next year, like you said, it could be different. Either it can be a better situation, or it can be worse. It just depends how CalPERS performs.
Yeah.
And that's one of the reasons we're recommending option three, that maybe you set aside a little bit each year, so in case that occurs, we have that in place.
Right. And the other question, or I guess just verification, is the recommendation of staff is to go to the twenty-year, and CalPERS is going to the twenty-year in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two.
Yes.
Correct? So we'd just be ahead of the game by jumping onboard now.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All righty. Thank you. Any other questions? Open it up to the audience, if anybody has no comments. Okay, I bring it back to council for discussion and direction.
I, I think option two is, is great. I, I, through owning our own home, we've refinanced four or five times, gone back up, went to fifteen, we're just going to be getting better interest rate. But if you can save that interest, it makes a big difference. And I think option two, and then looking at option three, you know, be fiscal responsible. I think it just comes to time and a point, you've got to bite the bullet, and, and go forward, and, and I think Chantel has proven us that this is our two best options, and we should look forward to going forward with it.
I agree that twenty-year is probably a smart move. Will save some interest, will save some money for our constituents. Option three, what, what are we looking at?
Well, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Chanel, but I think we'll, we'll bring back a policy in, in written format, in a resolution format for the city council to adopt. So this recommendation is just, yeah, you want to do it, and then we'll bring something back.
Direction back.
I'm having to clarify exactly how this is putting into base for the running day. Right?
Right.
Well, you know, if I might, is Bill still with us?
Yes.
Okay. You know, at some point, someone is going to have to put the bad news on the table and whatever. There needs to be an, not a, not a severe adjustment, but if there, if there were a continued recession, you know, you can't continue to write seven dollar, seven percent return on investments to people that are not participating in the program. And it's upside down already, but it's, it needs to be, you know, as it unfolded a year, I believe it was about a year and a half ago, they, they were very proud of themselves for taking off a half a percent off. But the, the, the people that have portfolios, that get income, saw it go down eighty percent. You, you know, you, you, you have a hundred thousand dollars in an account, and you might get two hundred dollars a year interest on it. And that's, that's, that's where we, somewhere in between. And, and I think we should, we should begin, somehow the state has to stop making those assumptions, whoever the actuaries are, because it's...
Well, and again, we're in better shape than a lot of cities.
So I don't know if he, if he fills out any questionnaires, this, I think the majority of the city would probably feel that we should, we need to not, not be making so many promises, but that's, that's the way the market is going.
Okay. So you've pretty much got direction?
We've got direction, so we'll bring back...
We've got direction. And I, I want to thank Chanel for all her hard work on this. She works with our, our local finance directors. They get together regularly, and this is a standing topic for them, so she's in touch with them. So everybody's in the same boat, and we're trying to make these presentations. And I thank Bill from, from CalPERS. They're very responsive and work with Chanel as well.
I truly appreciate it. Thank you, Bill.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And Chanel.
You're welcome.
I think you're good to go, Bill.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good job.
Our shot was fired.
Okay. That's just a little depressing, but. Business item ten, resolution number eighteen dash fourteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Buellton, California, for the purpose of mid-cycle budget amendments related to fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen. Director Zamora?
Madam Mayor of City Council, so tonight, I'm bringing forward to you fiscal year eighteen nineteen budget adjustments, and resolution number eighteen dash fourteen, a resolution of the city council of the city of Buellton, California, for the purpose of mid-cycle budget amendments related to fiscal year two thousand eighteen nineteen. Last year, on May twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, the city council adopted its first biannual budget for fiscal years seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen. Since then, there's been a lot of changes in assumptions based on external data and trend analysis that require certain budget amendments to be done. The adopted budget for fiscal year eighteen nineteen totaled fifteen million sixty-five dollars and eight hundred seventeen dollars. The portion of the general fund is seven million five hundred four thousand one hundred On the adopted budget, city council, excuse me, city council had the opportunity to have their own financial goals on there. They were listed on the, the goals on the budget. So the goals that were outlined were to maintain a balanced budget, construct trails and bike paths, continue economic development, sound planning and development, emergency preparedness, maintain infrastructure and sustainability, maintain and create new regulation programs. So I'll discuss each goal and how the city has accomplished these goals during seventeen eighteen, and how they plan to accomplish it in fiscal year eighteen nineteen. So goal one is to maintain a balanced budget. So the city adopted a biannual balanced budget for fiscal year eighteen nineteen, and we received the GFOA budget award. There is an estimated budget surplus for fiscal year seventeen eighteen in the amount of nine hundred fourteen thousand and sixty-eight dollars. The projected budget surplus with revisions for fiscal year eighteen nineteen is projected to be seven hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety-five cents. So this shows that we've been proactive and tried to maintain the, the budget balanced. Goal number two, construct trails and bike, bike paths. Money has been allocated into a reserves for bike and trails for both fiscal years. Additional funds can be directed to these revenues, to these reserves if council wishes. Goal three, continue economic development. During fiscal year seventeen eighteen, city council adopted the Avenue of Flags specific plan. Again, the council can allocate funds for improvements of medium two for parking and flex space in order to get this going. Goal four, sound, sound planning and development. There are various projects in the city in, either under construction or have been approved by the planning commission. Goal five, emergency preparedness. Staff has taken emergency preparedness courses through Fila and purchased a second search trailer. Goal number six, maintain infrastructure and sustainability. The city has completed various projects such as the Avenue of Flags pedestrian sidewalk improvements, Highway two forty-six sidewalk repairs, completed the fiscal year sixteen seventeen maintenance projects, and has had various repairs for water, wastewater treatment plant. And additional projects are part of the adopted capital improvement program. Goal seven, maintain and create recreation programs. The rec center has been increasing the program activities, such as offering a teen camp and sport camp for the upcoming two thousand eight summer. So tonight's discussion, the city council can return additional financial goals and can discuss additional budget, but budget amendments. So table one of your staff report, and it's on the screen. It summarizes the revised eighteen nineteen budget compared to the adopted fiscal year eighteen nineteen budget. So I have a column for the operating revenue plus transfers, operating expenditures plus transfers, and then the operating surplus and deficit. So if you see the, the overall total and all fund totals, the revised fiscal year eighteen nineteen has a surplus of seven hundred ninety-two dollars and nine hundred ninety-five. All right. I have adjusted some of the revenue for the gas tax and measure A tax to include reserves, because for some reason, eighteen nineteen had a deficit of about one point four million dollars, because we did not include those transfers for projects. So that's why you see the huge jump, the surplus of almost eight hundred thousand to a deficit of one point four million. So the only funds with a deficit in place for revised budget is the wastewater and water funds. We already know this, that for years, the water rate and sewer rates have not been increased, but slowly they have been reversing the effect. So we still have a deficit, but it's much smaller than we had projected in our original adopted budget. For, for the wastewater fund, we had adopted a deficit of four hundred six thousand three hundred fourteen, but in our revised budget, we have a deficit of one hundred ninety thousand one hundred fifty-two, which is significantly lower. In our, our water fund, we have budgeted a five hundred eighty-seven thousand eight hundred forty deficit, and now it's down to forty-seven thousand three hundred fifty-seven. And you can see here that the general fund has the biggest surplus of one million twenty-two thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars. So I'll discuss the changes which, within each fund, and recommend budget, budget amendments. So the easiest way I thought we should, we can do this is go over exhibit A, and I can discuss what has changed. So on exhibit A, you have the general fund budget summary. I categorize this by category, by revenue category, and then expenditures by department. So the first one, the revenue that was proposed in the original budget was seven million seven hundred forty-one thousand three hundred ninety-eight. And the proposed revenue for eighteen, for the revised eighteen nineteen figures, it's eight million five hundred eleven and thirty-three dollars, which is a ten percent increase. So the amount increased by seven hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred thirty-five. The main increase, if you see the property taxes, is a twelve percent change from the original budget. The reason for that increase is because we had the new crossroads development and the Hampton Inn. So these figures are everything that was on the tax trail for, as of January first, two thousand eighteen, which is, we had significant increases there. The next one is sales tax. So that increased three percent. And again, that is because we did open more retail spaces, so that brought in more sales tax. The next revenue source that increased, and this was our largest increase, was our transient occupancy tax. That increased twenty-six percent, which, which is attributed by the New Hampton Inn hotel. We did not anticipate that we were going to have a huge increase in TOT. Our assumptions for eighteen nineteen was that it would probably take away from the other hotels, which is not, which is why we did not budget a high amount.
Chanel?
Yes.
With Sideways Inn and the expansion of Flying Flags, did that play a part in it as well? Or was it pretty much Hampton Inn?
It was pretty much Hampton Inn. The other ones did affect it some, but that was a large, that was the reason why it increased.
Thank you.
And then the other increase was seven percent from revenue from other agencies. So what's included in there is the motor vehicle license compensation. So that actually comes from Sirius and Alabama as part as the property taxes, but we budget it as a separate line item. And because property taxes, they go up, that also went up. And so overall, the revenue went up for, went up eleven percent. And now we look at general fund expenses. Staff recommends decreasing appropriation by fifteen thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars. So there is a lot of movement going on in each department. Some departments said decrease appropriation, some increased it, but the net amount was a decrease of fifteen thousand two hundred and eighty-two. The most significant reason for the decrease is the reduction of the share of contract budget, which reduced the expenditures by almost two hundred thousand. So I'll go in by each department, and I'll inform you what staff recommends. So for city council, we show a one percent increase. So the increase is due to appropriations in the amount of one thousand eight hundred forty for travel and training. We recommend this so more council members can take, can participate in more events and conferences.
I had just a quick one on that one. It went up, we had decided two or three years ago that council would, council members would go pick one event to go to. My mistake was that I did it in a fiscal, fiscal year, I was looking at calendar year, and this was done on a fiscal year. So I'm hoping that next year, that that will go down, but...
So...
Go to Sacramento.
So the next department, the change is city manager. It says zero percent here, but it was a small percentage, which is why it fits zero. But staff recommends a decrease to city manager appropriations in the amount of two hundred fifty-four dollars for office supplies and commuter, computer maintenance. fifty-four dollars for office supplies and computer maintenance. The non-departmental fund, all increased by one percent, but this is where the capers and liability is budgeted, as well as other items. So the increase to non-departmental appropriation is in the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred and sixty-two, which is again, the net of increases and decreases of appropriations. Staff recommends five thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars increase to medical benefit, which reflects the addition of the retiree receiving health insurance benefits. And this was not in the original eighteen nineteen budget. Staff also recommends twenty-seven thousand five hundred decrease to the insurance liability. The amount paid in previous years never went over a hundred thousand dollars, which is why I'm bringing it down, because we budgeted a hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred.
Thank you.
And does that, then does that free up that money to sit in the earnings? Because you're still receiving income.
Can you clarify that?
You're not going to be spending the money.
It goes back to the general fund.
It just goes back to the general fund and shows the surplus that we have.
The general fund then is earning, that's earning revenue.
Yes, correct.
It's part of your portfolio, so the portfolio goes up?
Yes.
That amount.
And we also recommend a two thousand two hundred ten increase to the annual control contract to reflect the one point five percent contract increase anticipated for fiscal year eighteen nineteen.
And the council approved that contract last meeting?
We also recommend a five thousand seven hundred dollar decrease to computer maintenance to reflect against previous year's trend, we have not spent as much as we have budgeted. Four thousand eight hundred increase to membership and publication to reflect membership increases for League of Cities, Association of California Water Agencies, and to the Santa Barbara County Laffco Commission. And our biggest increase for the non-departmental department is forty-four thousand increase to capers unfamiliar liability to reflect the required unfamiliar liability amount due to capers. And this assumes that twenty-year amortization schedule payment. And staff also recommends decreasing office supplies for non-departmental by five thousand three hundred dollars. And we propose one thousand four hundred eighty dollars increase to the utility sewer to reflect the new sewer rates that are going to become effective July first, two thousand eighteen. And in addition, nine hundred sixty increase to utilities water to reflect the water rate increases effective July first, two thousand eighteen. And the last adjustment for the non-departmental is one thousand one hundred eighty-seven decrease to the Santa Barbara County Mental Health Network Crisis Service to reflect the new contract amount of two thousand eight hundred and eighty-three for fiscal year eighteen So the next department is the finance department. So that shows a one percent increase. So the increase that we recommend is a real increase appropriation in the amount of eleven thousand one hundred seventy-seven for salaries and benefits. And let me get the right numbers for that. So the reason for this is because council approved a two point seven COLA, but after doing the analysis, we had budgeted a two percent. Most departments fell under that budget amount. The reason that the finance department went over is because all the employees in the funding department are not at their highest step level. So in addition to the COLA, they're also going to be receiving a step increase during the year, which contributes to that addition. And to give you more detail, is, so an increase in salaries of ten thousand eighty-three dollars, an increase for the employer pay DCP of three thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars. So that is for management, and there was a zero dollar budget for that. And a decrease in miscellaneous expenses of five hundred twenty dollars, a decrease in office supplies of one thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. And that was for a net increase in appropriation of eleven thousand one hundred and seventy-seven Staff also recommends the budget adjustments for public safety, police, and fire. We already discussed earlier that the safety, police, and fire was going to reduce appropriations. So staff recommends to decrease the share of contract by one hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred and thirty. And in addition, staff recommends increasing the fire contract by eight thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars. And this is because we had budgeted about one hundred ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty for fiscal year eighteen nineteen. But we are only, but we're currently paying two hundred and two thousand one hundred and fifty-two for fiscal year seventeen eighteen. So we already pay more than the budgeted amount of fiscal year eighteen nineteen. So I'm assuming a two percent increase on seventeen eighteen. And for library, there's a zero percent increase. And one thing I want to let council know is that the contract is a hundred forty-one thousand six hundred forty-one, but because Galita created the new libraries in, everything's kind of up in the air that Beulton might be able to join Galita. And in addition to that, the city of Santa Barbara decided that they might increase our contract by thirty-nine thousand one hundred thirty-one. I don't know if that came to play.
Let me give an update on that, since the staff report was prepared, because I have talked to various entities. And the action of the Santa Barbara City Council on May fifteenth was to ask the board of supervisors to rescind their five percent off the top and their twenty percent cap on administration fees, so libraries like Beulton and Solvang and Carpinteria are not getting hit by this large increase. If that's the case, then we would not have to pay any additional money to Zone One, Santa Barbara, and we could work towards a transition to Zone Four. So at this point, I think the board is going to revisit that in June. So at this point, no change to the library. If something does change and we have to kick up some more money, they'll come back to council for full discussion on whether we want to do that.
And what, what do you foresee then? What's the area for, that's the zone?
That Zone Four is Galita.
I understand, but if we fold it into that zone, do you have an idea what our contribution would be?
Not at this time. I've just had initial discussions with the city manager. I told her how much we're contributing, that the lease is one dollar basically for the building, and
Probably a good deal.
Once they get their legs under July first, starting their library, and get their legs under them and figure out things, we'll start having discussions with them of how much it's going to cost and what the service level will be. They would like to provide us with our own, like home rule type of thing, and more transparency financially. So we've got off to a good start, and they're really willing to work with us on this. But at this point, for the budget, keep it as is.
Does that affect the contribution that we're, I mean, are they withholding anymore or taking, what's changing? Just their operating costs are going to be down, so we're going to be operating at the expenses for?
You mean with Galita?
Yes.
We don't know yet, because we haven't.
Okay, they haven't even.
No, because they haven't even started their own library yet. So they're going to figure that out, and then they're going to look at whether Beulton, Solvang, Carp, Montecito, whatever goes into that zone instead of Santa Barbara, and then we'll do, start negotiations on that.
There was a real butchering, I thought, the last time the money was divvied out.
Yeah. I think it's going to be a smoother, smoother transition this time, and hopefully the board can reconsider their decision, and then we can have a year to work out a transition to Zone Four if that works out.
That's what Marcus asked them to do.
And if that would happen, does that change then, Dave is our rep, does it change the makeup of what he represents?
No.
He's just going to represent Beulton?
All he does is represent Beulton, whether he's in Zone One, Two, Three, or Four. Correct.
Okay, so the next department that's going to require budget adjustment is Recreation Department. It is projected that
There he is. I knew he wasn't.
The expenses would go up three percent. Staff recommends an increase to recreation appropriations in the amount of fifteen thousand two hundred twenty-one. And the breakdown of these are an increase to the hourly employees in the amount of ten thousand one hundred seventy-three to accommodate the seasonal employees. And associated with that is employer taxes. So staff recommends an increase in employer social security and Medicare taxes of two thousand five hundred forty-eight, a decrease in miscellaneous expenses of one thousand forty, an increase in provision recreation program expenditures of one thousand five hundred, and an increase in recreation selling fifty-fifty expenditures of one thousand.
Can I ask a question for Kyle? Does that fold in more bodies? Is it, you're picking up new people rather than just giving raises to our existing?
Well, correct, and it more accurately reflects, I think Chanel may have given a clarification, maybe even six to eight months ago, regarding our major programs happen during the summertime. And unfortunately for accounting, the fiscal year falls right in the middle. And so revenues tend to come in much higher in June, because people are paying for their whole summer of camps, yet the expenses come in the next fiscal year. And so this more accurately reflects that, that those hourly positions that will, that will be for camp counselors and such.
But the ten thousand one seventy-three increases, that new, would that be new man, new person hours, rather than?
I don't believe so.
If you remember earlier this fiscal year, we came back with a budget amendment for that, because it seemed the trend was about anywhere between sixty thousand and seven thousand, and we had under budgeted. We're kind of doing the same thing where the budget was.
Because that was for the past fiscal year.
The past fiscal year.
Yeah.
You were balancing.
That covers that group in.
Yeah, it's the same thing, it's just from seventeen eighteen to eighteen nineteen. Correct?
Yes, that was correct.
And we can expect the revenues to, I mean.
Yes.
Going to get revenue from this. This is our summer program.
No, I understand, but I just, the forecast would be, because the more people you have assisting, the broader the program can offer
Correct.
Services to the public, or
Correct, correct.
As long as we're being realistic about recovery.
Correct. And so I think I've mentioned to council before, the most of our class instructors and people who are offering recreational services fall under a seventy-thirty split program, where basically there's, it can't go into the red, because the instructor is taking that risk along with the rec department, that if one person shows up, they get seventy percent of that revenue. If nobody shows up, they don't get paid. So it shares that risk, rather than the traditional, you get paid, you know, fifteen dollars an hour, no matter how many students show up. So that actually, so this refers to our seasonal and part-time employees, as opposed to all of the other instructors who fall under that, that more entrepreneurial seventy-thirty program.
That's very logical. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we move then to the next department. The next department that requires a budget amendment is Public Works Parks. This increase is about four percent. So staff recommends that city council increase the public works parks in the amount of twelve thousand three hundred, and this is mostly because of the utility water rate increases. The city does pay for its own water, and it needs to water its parks. So this takes into consideration the rate increase. And because also the city has the bigger meters, which cost a few thousand dollars a monthly service.
And that was four percent?
Yes, that was four percent.
Is there a dollar?
A dollar amount is twelve thousand three hundred.
Now, we talked about the water, because we were recently requested to kind of just forego charging for what it costs to deliver the water at the school. And that was, that was an agreement that was made years ago, and I thought it was a very fair agreement. Are we, are we going to stay on track with getting revenue, getting the same revenue, rather than, we recently were asked to drop.
No decisions.
I think, I got it, but I'd just like to re, maintain the knowledge that we cost money to provide the service.
To schools and cities, huh?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the next one is Public Works Landscape and Maintenance, and that is, that has a one percent increase. And so staff recommends an increase to Public Works Landscape Maintenance in the amount of twelve thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars for the utility water rate increase effective July first, two thousand eighteen. The next department that we're going to look at is Public Works General, and that department projects a one percent increase. The increase that staff recommends is a total of sixteen thousand seven hundred. And so I'll give you the line item breakdown for that one. So staff recommends reducing the hourly employee item by thirteen thousand sixty dollars. The Public Works Department does not have any hourly employees on payroll, so therefore we can eliminate that line item. An increase of sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars for utilities water to reflect the water rate increase. And an increase. Oh, sorry, I jumped ahead of myself. So for the planning department, this is a department that had the biggest percentage increase. So it increased by twenty-eight percent. And the majority of the reason this increase is because we added back the planning director. So staff recommends to increase the planning director salaries and benefits for a total of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand four hundred twenty-six, and to increase the planning commissioner salaries, two thousand two hundred sixty-seven, to reflect the annual amount of, the total of what the city pays for the planning commissioners now that they have a full body. And also an increase in advertising and legal for the amount of one thousand seven hundred and ninety-six. And also, staff recommends a decrease to planning appropriations in the amount of thirty-three thousand one hundred ten to the reduction in planning contract services and code enforcement expenditures.
I'm sorry, how much was that again?
For the reduction. The reduction in planning contract was thirty-two thousand six hundred, and code enforcement was five hundred and ten.
Thank you very much.
And that's because we did Irma on the six-month contract as opposed to the year. And also depending on our planning director recruitment, the cost for salaries may go down if something, you know, we do in-house, then one position's still vacant.
That's what's so nice about this, is it's changeable.
Yes, definitely, so.
Well, appreciate you looking both ways.
So as a result of all these recommended appropriation changes, the projected surplus for the general fund for fiscal year eighteen nineteen is projected to be one million twenty-two thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars compared to the current surplus of two hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty-six. And that's an increase of about seven hundred eighty-four thousand nine hundred and sixteen. So next we'll look at sewer and sewer capital funds. If you look at the first line item in revenue, that's charges for services, so that's sales. And then the next one is set fees and late charges. So the charges for services, that is going up twenty-six percent, which is roughly two hundred thirty-two thousand nine hundred because of the water rate increases. And if you see the projected amount for seventeen eighteen, that's projected to one million seventy-two thousand two hundred and twenty. So we just took about three So we just took about three percent increase from that for eighteen nineteen. And for setup fees, I kind of projected which the trend amount, so you can see it's usually eleven hundred. And that's kind of what we see it's normal because when somebody comes for, to set up water, it costs five dollars for the sewer and five dollars for the sewer, five dollars sewer, five dollars water, for a total of ten dollars setup fee. So that is kind of projected in there. And.
Is that a, is that an in-house cost, or do you have to pay someone that money? Is it our, is it our?
No, that's our revenue when somebody comes and applies for water.
Okay, but the money, that goes to the city?
Yes, that goes to the city.
I just wanted to know, were you having to pay that money to some accounting firm?
No.
Okay.
And then, so, and then the proposed budget as well is increase late charges and increase the interest by fifty-four percent. Um, this last month, or this month, we reinvested a new certificate of deposits, so we have, uh, more money to invest. Therefore, we have a bigger interest revenue coming in, which is why I accounted for that huge increase in interest. Um, so the total recommended revenue increase for the sewer fund is two hundred thirty-six thousand six hundred and ninety. For expenditures, I categorize this by employee services, operating and maintenance, and depreciation. And then I have a separate line item below for any transfers for capital improvement project. Just so it could be easier for council to visualize, here's our operating expenditures, and then here's our capital.
Appreciate it.
Um, staff recommends increase, uh, increasing sewer fund appropriations by twenty thousand dollars, five hundred twenty-eight. The most significant reason for the increase is the CalPERS unfunded liability portion. Uh, the portion that the water, the sewer fund will pay is an increase of ten thousand dollars. Other budget items that require appropriations include nine thousand five hundred eighty-eight for computer maintenance and software. This includes Comcast, retireer account software, Atosys, and an increase in chemical analysis of five thousand five hundred uh, because the cost of, um, the chemical services has increased. And an increase in operational supplies of one thousand four hundred forty. And in addition to the increase in appropriation, staff also recommends a decrease in maintenance and repairs of one thousand dollars and a decrease in contract services of five thousand for, for total decrease in appropriation of six thousand. And that amounts to the total net of twenty thousand five hundred twenty-eight increase. So as, uh, the total, the revenue minus the expenditure gives us a net operating loss of one hundred ninety thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars compared to the net loss of four hundred six, four hundred six thousand three hundred and fourteen dollars from the original budget.
Could I ask, what, what are Tyler, this is, are these franchise fees or the, the, what, what do we spend a year?
Uh, Tyler?
We've, we've paid for it, haven't we, or did we leave?
They, no. It is, uh, so, it has annual software licenses, and it's about fifteen thousand dollars.
Annual?
Annual, and then it's, yeah, and it's allocated.
Didn't know if we were paying franchise.
No.
Fees in the, somewhere forty to sixty thousand dollars.
No, it's only fifteen thousand dollars, and then it gets allocated between the general water and sewer.
You've been here from that whole transition.
Yes.
And you feel that's very beneficial, I mean, the Tyler is running much better.
Yes.
Accounting-wise and for your competency level.
Yeah, it's very easy to.
All days we say, we don't know.
Yeah, it's very easy to use, and you can pull up as many reports as you want. And if you don't have a report, you can even request Tyler to, um, yeah, develop it for you.
And, and does Tyler defend your reports, your, your money, your expenses?
Uh, yes.
You know, we've, there've been accusations that.
Yes, and with Tyler.
Mismanagement of dollars.
Yeah, but Tyler, we have the option of attaching our documents, so every time we have an invoice, we always attach the docu, the backup to the invoices. And with cash receipts, the same thing, when we receive, um, deposits or any cash, we attach the backup to it. So we have a hard copy and we have the electronic copy, so it's easy for anybody to say, I want to see the copy.
Think it's good to reinforce that, uh, process that you go through for the naysayers?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so I will go next to the water and wastewater capital funds. So staff recommends increasing revenue for charges for services for a total of five hundred fifty. Staff recommends increasing the total revenue for a total of five hundred thirty-three thousand eight hundred sixty-six. The charges for revenue is projected to increase five hundred thirty-three thou, five hundred thirty-three dollars, eight hundred ten cents, uh, twenty-nine percent increase. And that's because it's a new water rate increase, increases effective July first, two thousand eighteen. And again, they'll increase in interest because of the new CDs that the city is now investing in. So the total projected revenue increase for the water fund is twenty-nine percent. For the expenditures, operating and maintenance is going to increase slightly, that's why it has zero percent because they did not calculate that. Staff recommends increasing the water fund appropriations by four thousand two hundred eighty-seven. The most significant reason for the increase is that the CalPERS unfunded liability portion of the sewer fund increased by ten thousand dollars. And other budget items that require appropriation increases include computer maintenance and software for ten thousand two hundred forty-two, tourists, one thousand four hundred seventy, regulatory compliance, two thousand six hundred forty, and an increase to the senior Nash River appropriation of four thousand eight, four thousand seven hundred and eighty. In addition to the increases in appropriations, staff also recommends a decrease to the following budget items. A decrease to hourly employees of seven thousand seven hundred eleven, a decrease in contract services for one thousand nine hundred, and a decrease in contract services engineering for one thousand five hundred, and a decrease in chemical analysis of eight hundred. Then the net surplus with the proposed revenues and expenditures is a deficit of forty-seven thousand three hundred fifty-seven compared to the deficit budgeted of five thousand, eighty-seven thousand eight hundred forty dollars. And the majority of that was because of auto revenue, new revenue, that's we're receiving for the water rate increase. So if you see down below, um, the fund balances, the, since the new water rates came into effect November first of two thousand sixteen, the fund balance has slowly been declining over the past years, it has been declining faster. So the water rates have stabilized, the rate in which the water and sewer funds have decreased.
Rose, has Ray Takanichi given you any, it's saying, solidifying that the decisions we made were prudent and that, does he ever follow up on how the, the rate structure we came up with is creating a, a more balanced budget? We're not having to see these horrendous shortages?
Well, we have, we don't, we haven't, um, been following up with, with Ray.
I was just curious.
Chanel follows up with the actual, as you're seeing in this report.
Yeah, we're looking at real numbers.
As far as the validity of what's been received.
You know, the, uh, Foster, you know, brought a chart that showed the red and blue lines.
Mm-hmm.
And we haven't seen that, and I just wondered if it's kind of leveled out, where there's not the major peaks and valleys?
Well, hasn't, it's not that it's leveled out, it's, it's, the slope has decreased. It's still, we're still declining, but it's not as, as steep of a, a decrease as it has been. Right, we're not going to end up.
And we're, we're operating in a fixed vacuum where we're not bringing all these, you know, some communities that are adding new tracks are picking up all those connection fees, and that's, you know, kind of a, a, what do you call it? A false sense of security for revenue.
Right, because the revenues for connection fees is supposed to go towards capital improvements, it's not operations and maintenance, so.
Right.
New connections does not equal additional revenues for operations and maintenance.
Well, understood, just, just wanted to verify that.
Yes.
Yeah, that's why I broke it down, if you see capital contribution, I separate the connection fees from the transfers for capital improvement projects. So it's not included in revenue.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome. So next we'll move to the special revenue funds. These special revenue funds have restrictions associated with them with the use of the revenue. And these restrictions are either mandated by the state of California or the county of Santa Barbara. And capital improvement projects are the majority of the category, the expenditure categories for these special revenues. The adopted fiscal year eighteen nineteen budget appropriations are one million nine hundred fifty-six thousand eight hundred sixty. And the revenue projections are one million three hundred eighteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine, eighty-nine. So you can see that we're projecting more expenditures and revenues, and that's because I found that we did not budget the transfers from reserves. So I will go one by one again for each fund in the special revenues. So the first one is the housing fund. Uh, the only thing that we recommend is increasing revenue to reflect the new interest from the additional certificate of deposits that we invested for a total of one thousand seven hundred twenty-five. And the same with the traffic mitigation fund, we recommend a fifty-five, fifty-four dollar revenue increase to reflect the additional interest on the CDs. For gas tax, uh, we recommend, uh, an increase in revenue of forty-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-five that reflects the estimated gas tax from the Department of Finance. So they published their estimates on January two thousand eighteen, suggested our projections based on what the state provided us. Uh, so the same thing for SB one. One of the original documents that we had said that they estimated a hundred and thirteen thousand, but with the new estimates that came in, they only estimated eighty-one thousand, let me get that right there. Eighty-five thousand one hundred seventy-two, so we're decreasing revenue of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred twenty-eight for the SB one line item. And staff also recommends an increase in revenue to reflect the additional interest earned on the CDs. So that made it a twenty-seven percent increase in interest. And we did not change any of the expenditures for gas tax, and the net was a zero. So this one is truly balanced.
Yay.
And we still have some funds available for the next year. And then I get, and make this easier to understand that transfer from reserves are not revenue, so they're separated here, so I take it out from the fund balance. And the next one is the local transportation fund. Staff recommends an increase to interest of a total of two hundred and thirty-nine dollars to affect, reflect the additional interest earned on the CDs. And also you see there's a sixty percent decrease in intergovernmental. Uh, the decrease totals five billion nine hundred and sixty-three, and that is the STA funding from, funding from SB CAG. So on the fiscal year eighteen nineteen TDA claim, we release that to SB CAG, so it's not actually revenue. So what I did is I removed that from our budget since we're not receiving that money directly.
I'm sorry, it's hypothetical.
And so as a result of this, the revenue decreased twelve thousand seven hundred. Oh, got that wrong, it decreased five thousand seven hundred twenty-four. And then for operating and maintenance, we increased our budget, so staff recommends a twenty thousand nine hundred increase to the police extension pilot program to reflect the increase in cost for, since the service is no longer subsidized. And we also recommend a four hundred dollar decrease to land recording country. Our contract is only twenty thousand dollars, uh, uh, every year. So bringing that back down to the actual contract amount. And then we're also decreasing same as value dollar ride to reflect the typo on the original budget. So that's a decrease of thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. And we're also recommending a six thousand dollar increase to transfer the reserve for bikes and pedestrian to reflect the ten thousand dollars allocated on the measure A five-year plan. So as a result of the revenue increases and expenditures, the operating income surplus would be thirty-six thousand eight hundred twenty-seven.
Can I ask you the?
Yes.
While we went through the, talking about the bike and trail. Can, can I have an update on what the trails and bike path account balances? Because we're just, we've just been putting things that I think we were.
Put ten thousand in twice, it should be twenty thousand.
That's, that's the total then, okay, that, that's, I remembered the ten, and that's what you just said, another ten.
Essentially what it is, is the fund balance, so you see seventeen eighteen projected, that's how much we have, fifty thousand eighty-eight. And then, um.
That's the balance.
Yeah, that's, that's the balance.
And how did they get to there, then, do, are we getting that from someone else, some other, uh?
Yeah, the, the general fund transfers money into the LTF, which is what, what goes into that.
So it's a formula?
Yes. Essentially.
So we, we put in twenty and the balance is fifty. Sounds like we made thirty thousand, huh? Is that right?
Yes.
So the balance then is, to answer my question on page one eighty-two, is fifty thousand eighty-eight dollars?
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So Fund twenty-nine is the transportation planning fund. Um, this one did not have any interest budgeted, so we recommend an increase in entry revenue of seventy-five dollars. And we're also recommending a decrease in the intergovernmental revenue of four thousand. Uh, that is based on previous year's trend. For seventeen eighteen, the county gave us a number that we're going to receive seventeen thousand nine hundred forty-four, and we're only projecting a small increase for eighteen nineteen. The reason that sixteen seventeen, we received forty-three thousand eight hundred seventy-six is because we did not receive anything, anything fiscal year fifteen sixteen, so we requested that, so they paid us two years in sixteen seventeen.
Yay, for Chanel.
And we did not change any of our operating and maintenance for transportation planning, so we have a surplus of five hundred seventy-five dollars on Fund seventy, uh, Fund twenty-nine. So then on the next one, I did find an error on this one when I was preparing for tonight. The bottom line does not change, but up on the screen we have the revised version. So for measure A, we propose an increase in revenue, or not increase in revenue, but a, a transfer from reserves for a total of three hundred two dollars and six hundred thirty-seven, three hundred, three hundred two thousand six hundred thirty-seven from the reserves. And an increase of eight thousand six hundred sixty-six to measure A revenue that was reflected on the measure A five-year plan. On your document, you have the increase in interest and you have more transfer from reserves. So the table on the screen is the corrected version.
And when you make a recommendation, include the revised table for measure A.
And then that, that bottoms down to is our budget as well. The proposed budget adjustments for the general fund increases the original adopted net surplus by seven thousand, seven hundred eighty-four thousand nine hundred sixteen, which increases the total. by $784,916, which increases the total surplus to $12,142, which allows city council to allocate to new projects that may occur on new city financial goals. The net increase in revenue for the wastewater fund is $216,162, that reduces the net deficit to $190,152. The net increase for the water fund is $540,483, that reduces the water deficit to $47,357. And the net increase for the special revenue funds is $374,430. Staff recommends that the city council consider adoption of resolution number 18-4, a resolution of the city council of the city of Burton, California, for the purpose of mid-cycle budget amendments related to fiscal year 201819. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Okay, any questions? Certainly.
One question. For the wastewater and water fund, with the increase in July coming up, will our deficit be reduced? As much as it is being reduced now for, because I know we talked about when doing all the median changes, so like this, this was still going to be running a bigger deficit?
The numbers here are the proposed deficit, so that won't change.
So we're still going to be?
Yes, we're still going to be in the red.
Red, okay.
Not as much in the red though.
Yeah, that's true.
Not as much.
What is that number? I don't see it.
It is on page 181.
181. Sorry.
Then we see under net change on fund balance, that's the decrease, the deficit of $137,757.
Okay, I'll take your word for, oh, there you are. And that's down from, oh, let's transfer, okay.
Our original budget was $678,240.
It's close to six, close to $600,000 and those two are put together.
Yeah, about a half a million. It's nice. Every, you know, we need, we need to get it back. We need to get it more in line. Any other questions? I can't go to the audience, I can, but there is no audience, so bring it back for discussion. I want to thank you for going line by line.
You're welcome.
You saved me, us a lot of talking. You did it all yourself. I really appreciate that. That was really, really nice. General fund, how wonderful to be in this position. Not a lot of cities are in this position. I know that we adopt the resolution. When do we discuss what we might do? What direction?
You don't always like to jump in.
You can't, is it to note that they can discuss what they want to do and then we bring it back?
Well, actually if they, you can discuss and if you want to allocate some of the million dollar surplus to a line item such as trails or the median, you can do that as part of your motion and we will adjust the attachment accordingly.
Okay.
But frankly got to tell you, I think the median is more visual and vocal than the trails. And I think we, until somebody steps up and does something significant, I think the money would be better spent showing the center, that's the center of our community, whether people want to accept it or not. The medians are the wholly owned property to improve.
So you, yes, you can allocate some of that and we'll put a line item in the capital with that money.
I'm not sure what the amount is, but I would like to find out what a bid would be to bring one of those islands into compliance. We've talked about the specific plan for so long.
Well, maybe at this point, might I suggest maybe $300,000 as a, as a starting point.
It's a third of the, so it's not being overly.
Right, we'll still have a nice cushion and, and again, we can always come back. That's the purpose of the budget.
I think 300, I was going to, I, we had 784, 916 and we went up to $1,022,142, which is about, about 250, a little bit less than 250,000 more. So I was going to suggest the 250, but I'm, I'm open to.
I think the three is a good, good round number to.
I could go for the 250. I'd rather be, well, keep a little.
Conservative?
Yeah, let's keep a little bit more in the bank.
Shall we go with 250 and then see what Mark comes back with for the 250 and if we need to adjust it?
Okay.
Because we are going to have to.
We have it, but we don't have.
We are going to be working with a 20-year calpers.
Yeah, that helps.
UAL and.
That's true. We're biting off a bigger obligation.
So, and based on this direction, I just want to be clear, we will, staff will start looking at some initial design and cost estimates for that median since you are budgeting it for the next fiscal year.
I do agree with you that I think that should be where the money.
We do have money in the purse already.
That's where it should go. I would also, although it doesn't look like we're going to really make any money on our gas tax and all of that, but I was hoping that, I had talked to Rose about if there was any extra there, that we could work on sidewalks on Avenue of Flags.
But I, but I think, aren't we going to be picking up a new gas producer? Is it, is the fellow on Exxon?
Yes, we will be picking up an Arco at the top end of the avenue.
And that's, that's high revenue.
For the year.
Well, you mean this fiscal year, but I mean, our year's in the middle, so we have like six months of a growth if they get direct. I don't know how long it'll take.
Well, and then we're getting lots of fines off of one of our property owners on the avenue too. That'll, that'll.
There's like different sections.
Eighty here, seventy there. So you got $300.
Now, I think, that's the direction I'd like to see. I'd like to see 250, what we can get done with that. And then if we need to play with the money, then we can do that. But that seemed to be what the difference was.
And it might make the difference in a quality project versus a facelift.
Absolutely. And we're not doing a facelift.
That would be great and that would help implement the specific plan and show the city's commitment towards doing some improvements out there as well.
I don't think other communities are making those kind of commitments.
Alrighty, so you've got, oh, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution number 18-4.
And include the revised table for measure.
Did you say 14?
Yes, 18-14. Or 18, yeah.
With the change to the Measure A spreadsheet and allocating the 250 towards the median improvement.
Second.
Sounds good. City managers report.
We need a.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good gracious, son.
You ready to go?
Yes, Linda, please.
Councilmember Mercado.
Aye.
Councilmember Randrisik.
Aye.
And Mayor Sier.
Aye.
I guess I'll be quick.
Thank you very much for calling me on that one. City managers report.
Thank you. I already mentioned that we're going with the library and I believe Vice Mayor King will be back in time for the meeting next Wednesday for the library advisory committee and I will be attending with him to help get the position out there.
Thank you very much. It's a big one. That's an important meeting.
We just finished our first go-through of the audit. They come for initial pre-review and then they come back in September for the final review before they finish their work. So we had, they were here for their field work and no, no significant issues discovered and they had all their files all over the table and working diligently on that. So we'll have them back in in September to finish that up. And you all have copies of the specific plan. It is published, thanks to Irma. She still has hair after trying to work with some of the graphics. We didn't have to go out to consultants, so she did a lot of that on her own to get it and that's why it took a little longer to put together. And it is on the website as well. And we're excited. And the marijuana ordinance will be going to the planning commission on June 7th and then to the city council on July 12th for the prohibition of the commercial activities.
Can I ask, because of the, I mean, you know, our, our, shoot, the revenue generators, our engines, our revenue engines, we had a 26% increase in TOT. And I mean, we're, we're poised to do more with the, if the two.
Two more hotels are.
Coming on.
Yes.
I, I just wonder if we could increase the visitors bureau outreach because I think, or I don't know how they do. I don't know how the few people do as much as they do, but they, they are, and I've, you know, we never get into that. They, they do it for the love of the city, but I just wondered if there's, I've never asked them what, because they always seem to ask appropriately, but they, you know, we've had, we have had people that think we need to keep, keep the throttle down, but the revenue is.
I think they're doing a bang-up job.
They'll be coming back with their fiscal year reports and all that, so we can flesh out and talk about that when they come forward for their presentations.
You know, I'm seeing the caliber of people that are presenting for communities, visiting in chambers and it, the bureaus and I think we're, we just seem to be staying up, but you can't, you can't have the horse running 300 days a year without, without some reward.
I think they did a very good job.
And they haven't, no one's asked. I just, who else has grown 26%? Is anyone?
All we have to do is see if grass goes to $4 a gallon, then we'll see if TOT.
Well, that'll be the test. Yes, that'll be the test, but we've been at five, four years ago in the community.
Mark, I wanted to thank you for showing me how the audits are done the other day. It's incredibly detailed and.
And I will send what I gave the mayor of what they do each time they come to the city to all the council members as well.
It's pretty amazing what the audits actually entail, so.
And they can, so you could, it's getting harder and harder to hide costs or revenues.
It's just about impossible. The documents they look through.
The idea is not to hide it.
Yes.
No, I know we're not doing it, but there've been communities that are.
All done?
All done.
Meeting adjourned. See y'all June 14th, 6 o'clock. I'll be calling in.
You have a good, have a good.